To get support from the nation to place a bid with the grant on those bridges in our state.
Yeah, I apologize. President, you'll just watch over leading guys that help us, American D, who help us from day to day in our lives. Take care of it. Please, President, make my friend.
Mr. President, if he lives in the flesh. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here. 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 We have four, and we are in session. First, I know the agenda is roll call, person. For approval minutes. I want to.
Question, do you approve?
Thank you. Have a motion approved on the first minute. I have to say, any discussion? Roll call.
Pete Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Nurse David?
Yes.
Chris Martin?
Yes.
Don't give me.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have approval for spot.
Question, do you approve?
Thank you. The motion by President, second, five eight, motion, any discussion? Roll call.
Pete Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Ford?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Nurse David?
Yes.
Chris Martin?
Yes.
Don't give me.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have approval, number, and we have one in the pack and one in the bag. One of the board of members, please.
Second.
They have a motion on the board. A total of four motions. Have a motion in the second, any discussion? Roll call.
Pete Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Ford?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Nurse David?
Yes.
Chris Martin?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have approval, number, and we have one in the pack and one in the bag. One of the board of members, please.
Second.
They have a motion on the board. A total of four motions. Have a motion in the second, any discussion? Roll call.
Pete Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Ford?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Nurse David?
Yes.
Don't give me.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion approved. Next, is President, next. Mr. President, you named it one after another today.
Yes.
Page one, one oh one, what's the number?
I'm not in one oh one, you have the numbers thirty-three through forty-two.
This is number thirty-three, this is dollar one oh one, and thirty-three is one oh one, thirty-nine thousand, that is made, the amount of five hundred sixty dollars set in the same, and fifty-three by three, three by five, twelve, thirty, same as you want. Thirty-four. It's fifty-four, one ten. It's fifty-four, two thirty. And Parker, this is the sheriff's department with a total of eighteen thousand, eight hundred six from the west. And I don't see where you let, that's all in the current. And thirty-five, and one oh one is forty-nine thousand, that's in Sheriff's Department, and it's only fifty-one, eighty-three, thirty-five, family buildings repairs, two thousand four hundred dollars. And one oh six, fifty-one, five thirty, one three nine, election workers.
Some of the fortunate families.
Yes. And so we're, yes. And it's going to, uh, fifty-one, five hundred, three nine. There's some services, number thirty-seven. One oh one, thirty-nine thousand, one balance, that's going to fifty-six, nine hundred, five ninety-nine, parks and red east, fifty-six, nine hundred, five ninety-nine, parks and red west, sixteen hundred on each side, over thirty-two. And this is the way it's back to regular situation, and motion is my last one. Thirty-eight, forty-seven, eight oh one, thirty-nine, ten grand, that's going to ninety-nine, one hundred, back five ninety, transferred to other funds, four hundred seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred seventy-nine dollars, sixteen hundred six. This is the resolution that was done last month dealing with the, uh, travel. Thirty-nine.
I'm waiting to, um, to make it over there. I'm not just looking at the page that she nailed and then I'm gonna, that's the same one.
Would, uh, you read that again?
There's a new bucket, that's the same, thirty-three.
This is the same as thirty-three. So this makes me go, you need to read the number, but it's leaving thirty-four.
Just thirty-three, um, we're giving it on thirty-nine.
So you just want for thirty-nine?
If that's the one that doesn't have the number, she wants to make it thirty-nine?
The one we just threw out?
No, no, sure. We've got one that doesn't have sanitation. And then we've got the long one. Now, this is different. This one.
This one?
I have, um, we did do the next one of the same.
Four, four, one, one, twenty-two.
This one, they should, like, they're.
We're at thirty-nine. All right, let's get this, start back to number thirty-nine, and we are gonna keep them away. Five hundred, four nine nine, juvenile, those supplies, green, red, and blue, five hundred three oh nine, juvenile contract, green, red, and blue. Now, the rest is all right? Hello? Number four, thirty-nine thousand, under the next one, balance, and another, nine thousand, that's going to be fifty-nine hundred, three, nine nine, fifty-five hundred, three five eight, this is general administration contracts and competition, or competition ready. What does that mean? Uh, what's that?
It's, I put an explanation, the, the line one is for our, our pickup, and line two is the lodging package.
Okay. And that, so we got one left on. All right, that's one that's in my hand, so I can read it. Two more.
Yeah.
Okay. Number one, four, two, two. Number forty-one, it's thirty-nine thousand, under this name, another, ten thousand, four eighteen, one fifty-one, nine hundred, three, three more, general, and legal services, ten thousand, four eighteen, and that's one that just come up, what, two days ago, three and a half? And then number forty-two, thirty-four, five one five, year model? Thousand fifty dollars. Fifty, uh, fifty-five hundred, seven one nine, had a process in the book, a thousand fifty, is this, this is just out of your office, someone was, Chairman?
Yes.
And, uh, these are all one oh ones, do you mind hearing motion? I have a motion, approve. And a motion by my left, thanks, second by Chris Martin, any discussion? Roll call.
Pete Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Ford?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Nurse David?
Yes.
Chris Martin?
Yes.
Don't give me.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, this is open, local park's preservation, federal bridge replacement program, oh four eleven, Kingsy Dairy Road, and Texas Creek Road. Georgine?
Yes.
Do you wanna read, that would amend into it the other two, and read one time?
Sure, I mean, that works, they're all the same word, except for the remaining sign and the bridge, we want it all by the number again, and, and, just like I said, this is to show the support for a federal agreement that the lead applies for, uh, for three bridges, and what makes this, uh, important is it's a hundred percent, that we don't have to manage, and we find that, and also, the county will be able to manage, uh, the project with the consultant, instead of these type of, will be able to manage it with the consultant, which is the same, it works out the same, but it'll be done on a quicker, quicker manner, uh, if we had to wait like eight years, uh, to get a project going through a state management, so this is working a lot, uh, a lot better. I'd like to ask for, uh, my assistant, Ms. Hannah Price, to read, because they're all the same, except the name of the bridge.
High priority bridge replacement program, HPVRP, and federal off system bridge replacement program, BRZ, county legislative body, CLB, support resolution. Whereas the improved act of twenty seventeen included a list of five hundred and twenty-six local bridges in need of repair, on Tennessee Department of Transportation, Department Bridge Inspection Reports, and it being the intent of the department to address all of these, therefore, the department created the high priority bridge replacement program, HPVRP, whereas the HPVRP per TCA fifty, fifty-four dash four, dash six oh one, provides grant funding for bridges not located on the state, state system of highways, known as off system bridges, for local governments who meet eligibility requirements, as well as drive, apply for, and manage grant funding. Whereas eligible BRZ projects are on the improved act list, and HPVRP can be used to cover the match for BRZ bridge projects in order to maximize both programs. Whereas the Polk County Road Department, PCRD, has written and applied for the BRZ project managed by the department's local programs division for Kingsy Dairy Road Bridge, over Kingsy Mill Branch, Bridge number seven hundred, one two two, one zero 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 five, at a hundred percent cost, now therefore, the resolve of the Polk County Commission, meeting in regular session this sixteenth day of March, twenty twenty-three, at the Polk County Courthouse in Benton, took a vote to show support on this grant application, resulting in a passage of resolution and agreement for any and all county elected or appointed officials to sign documents as necessary to facilitate the grant application process as expeditiously as possible to procure these grant funds. This resolution shall become effective on passage, the public welfare, welfare requirement adopted this sixteenth day of March, twenty twenty-three. And like you said, each bridge has a resolution for each one, Kingsy Dairy, the wording changes in the bowl, Kingsy Dairy, oh four eleven, over to oh four, and then Gracie Creek, over Temple.
The rule to do is, uh, sign it down, and then resolve the motion and vote. The, uh, oh four eleven, when you say oh four eleven, over to three, the, uh, twenty twenty-four, which is three one point three, the, uh, uh, when you say this, Kingsy Dairy, over three two, point three, resolution number three two, point three, Kingsy Dairy, over three, three, point three. Let's say, we'll, I don't think, there are four, but I have a motion. Make a motion, approve.
Second.
On all three, all three. Have a motion by my left, second by President, any discussion? We appreciate you. Roll call.
Pete Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Ford?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Nurse David?
Yes.
Chris Martin?
Yes.
Don't give me.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, the local department, uh, this is surplus property, uh, you should receive tonight, three, you did, or, or resolution, uh, there's been a, three fourth, will be the one that you see with a lot of lines, a lot of calls, and that's the general surplus, that would be three zero point three, in multiple abandoned, so if you have the resolution, uh, surplus, it will be three five point three. And, and one, oh, so that was the copper, copper hill, oh, yes, it'll be, uh, three six, that's, that's your resolution of this. So the first one, uh, as the generic, it's a request to make a surplus, uh, let's, like, probably, maybe a regular session, the, uh, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, with the intent to, to sell and auction hill at a later date for some of the TCA code, and you've got a list, and the items on the list are, uh, twenty, twenty-eight, you have the list, you have the description, serial number ten, and the year model, the date acquired. But I have a motion on three fourth point three. I have a motion, because these are more than different, and so I'm on, are, yes, making the, uh, true, so I have a motion on three fourth point three, any discussion, have a second?
Second.
Have a second, motion second, any discussion? Roll call.
Pete Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Ford?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Nurse David?
Yes.
Don't give me.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. The next one is, uh, three five point three, this is a surplus, uh, surplus property, which might be a gift, correct, we can.
They're gonna purchase it.
Oh, they're gonna purchase, but.
It's not a gift, but it's, it's also a sign of class protection.
It doesn't have to go to the bid cycle, or anything, no, it doesn't, all right, because it's government, and, uh, this, this is, all right, uh, you'll read this, change, and I, they will have, and the secondary, copper hill.
It's the same as, except the copper hill, section of, uh, the fine, and, uh, the, the city, and the, uh, project, we'll make notes on that, take one, go on, use that as a video. Uh, whereas the Polk County Road Department, PCRD, has equipment deemed unusable, and the current parts have been, uh, having to come off, so, whereas the status of this bridge being part of to declare it surplus before the county's legislative body, whereas the city of Benton has required about purchasing said equipment, knowing its condition for public use. Tennessee Code, and take, twelve dash two dash forty, brings counties may transfer surplus personal property to other government, by sale, give, trade, or barter upon such terms as the county legislative body may authorize, without public advertising or, uh, heading of the bill. Now, therefore, be it resolved by Polk County Commission, meeting in regular session this sixteenth day of March, twenty twenty-three, at the Polk County Courthouse in Benton, Tennessee, authorizing, Polk County Road Department, Lord G. Thompson Jr., to sign any and all documents necessary in this capacity as chief administrative officer of highways, along with the designation agent for the city of Benton, so that it has to facilitate, or faithfully, uh, execute documents according to the transfer ownership of the following equipment for the sale price of five hundred dollars. Uh, unit number five thirty-two, two thousand, one, third dump truck, with a bin number, uh, this resolution shall become effective by the county legislative body, on passage the public welfare requirement adopted this day, sixteenth of March, twenty twenty-three.
And we're going to add in the second one, just, if you don't care, uh, adding it to the city of Copper Hill, is the same setup, in the origin of authority, uh, and the city of Copper Hill be authority to make a, uh, first, um, chemicals, or, uh, two hundred dollars, numbers six two four, and that's the number three four, fifty-six ten, crack the board.
Yes.
With ten.
The boat, they were work, not, ought to be fired, except, less than.
Like I said, because these two are categorized, and it's something, I'm, sensation, with my motion, I'm voting, that's a little. My motion, approve.
Second.
A motion on three five and three six and twenty-three, resolution number, any discussion? Motion by, much later, second by, any discussion? Roll call.
Pete Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Ford?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Nurse David?
Yes.
Chris Martin?
Yes.
Don't give me.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, the local department, uh, this is surplus property, uh, you should receive tonight, three, you did, or, or resolution, uh, there's been a, three fourth, will be the one that you see with a lot of lines, a lot of calls, and that's the general surplus, that would be three zero point three, in multiple abandoned, so if you have the resolution, uh, surplus, it will be three five point three. And, and one, oh, so that was the copper, copper hill, oh, yes, it'll be, uh, three six, that's, that's your resolution of this. So the first one, uh, as the generic, it's a request to make a surplus, uh, let's, like, probably, maybe a regular session, the, uh, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, with the intent to, to sell and auction hill at a later date for some of the TCA code, and you've got a list, and the items on the list are, uh, twenty, twenty-eight, you have the list, you have the description, serial number ten, and the year model, the date acquired. But I have a motion on three fourth point three. I have a motion, because these are more than different, and so I'm on, are, yes, making the, uh, true, so I have a motion on three fourth point three, any discussion, have a second?
Second.
Have a second, motion second, any discussion? Roll call.
Pete Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Ford?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Nurse David?
Yes.
Don't give me.
Yes.
Chris Martin?
Yes.
Don't give me.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. The next one is, uh, three five point three, this is a surplus, uh, surplus property, which might be a gift, correct, we can.
They're gonna purchase it.
Oh, they're gonna purchase, but.
It's not a gift, but it's, it's also a sign of class protection.
It doesn't have to go to the bid cycle, or anything, no, it doesn't, all right, because it's government, and, uh, this, this is, all right, uh, you'll read this, change, and I, they will have, and the secondary, copper hill.
It's the same as, except the copper hill, section of, uh, the fine, and, uh, the, the city, and the, uh, project, we'll make notes on that, take one, go on, use that as a video. Uh, whereas the Polk County Road Department, PCRD, has equipment deemed unusable, and the current parts have been, uh, having to come off, so, whereas the status of this bridge being part of to declare it surplus before the county's legislative body, whereas the city of Benton has required about purchasing said equipment, knowing its condition for public use. Tennessee Code, and take, twelve dash two dash forty, brings counties may transfer surplus personal property to other government, by sale, give, trade, or barter upon such terms as the county legislative body may authorize, without public advertising or, uh, heading of the bill. Now, therefore, be it resolved by Polk County Commission, meeting in regular session this sixteenth day of March, twenty twenty-three, at the Polk County Courthouse in Benton, Tennessee, authorizing, Polk County Road Department, Lord G. Thompson Jr., to sign any and all documents necessary in this capacity as chief administrative officer of highways, along with the designation agent for the city of Benton, so that it has to facilitate, or, or faithfully, uh, execute documents according to the transfer ownership of the following equipment for the sale price of five hundred dollars. Uh, unit number five thirty-two, two thousand, one, third dump truck, with a bin number, uh, this resolution shall become effective by the county legislative body, on passage the public welfare requirement adopted this day, sixteenth of March, twenty twenty-three.
And we're going to add in the second one, just, if you don't care, uh, adding it to the city of Copper Hill, is the same setup, in the origin of authority, uh, and the city of Copper Hill be authority to make a, uh, first, um, chemicals, or, uh, two hundred dollars, numbers six two four, and that's the number three four, fifty-six ten, crack the board.
Yes.
With ten.
The boat, they were work, not, ought to be fired, except, lesser amount.
Like I said, because these two are categorized, and it's something, I'm, sensation, with my motion, I'm voting, that's a little. My motion, approve.
Second.
A motion on three five and three six and twenty-three, resolution number, any discussion? Motion by, much later, second by, any discussion? Roll call.
Pete Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Ford?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Nurse David?
Yes.
Chris Martin?
Yes.
Don't give me.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, the local department, uh, this is surplus property, uh, you should receive tonight, three, you did, or, or resolution, uh, there's been a, three fourth, will be the one that you see with a lot of lines, a lot of calls, and that's the general surplus, that would be three zero point three, in multiple abandoned, so if you have the resolution, uh, surplus, it will be three five point three. And, and one, oh, so that was the copper, copper hill, oh, yes, it'll be, uh, three six, that's, that's your resolution of this. So the first one, uh, as the generic, it's a request to make a surplus, uh, let's, like, probably, maybe a regular session, the, uh, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, with the intent to, to sell and auction hill at a later date for some of the TCA code, and you've got a list, and the items on the list are, uh, twenty, twenty-eight, you have the list, you have the description, serial number ten, and the year model, the date acquired. But I have a motion on three fourth point three. I have a motion, because these are more than different, and so I'm on, are, yes, making the, uh, true, so I have a motion on three fourth point three, any discussion, have a second?
Second.
Have a second, motion second, any discussion? Roll call.
Pete Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Ford?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Nurse David?
Yes.
Don't give me.
Yes.
Chris Martin?
Yes.
Don't give me.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. The next one is, uh, three five point three, this is a surplus, uh, surplus property, which might be a gift, correct, we can.
They're gonna purchase it.
Oh, they're gonna purchase, but.
It's not a gift, but it's, it's also a sign of class protection.
It doesn't have to go to the bid cycle, or anything, no, it doesn't, all right, because it's government, and, uh, this, this is, all right, uh, you'll read this, change, and I, they will have, and the secondary, copper hill.
It's the same as, except the copper hill, section of, uh, the fine, and, uh, the, the city, and the, uh, project, we'll make notes on that, take one, go on, use that as a video. Uh, whereas the Polk County Road Department, PCRD, has equipment deemed unusable, and the current parts have been, uh, having to come off, so, whereas the status of this bridge being part of to declare it surplus before the county's legislative body, whereas the city of Benton has required about purchasing said equipment, knowing its condition for public use. Tennessee Code, and take, twelve dash two dash forty, brings counties may transfer surplus personal property to other government, by sale, give, trade, or barter upon such terms as the county legislative body may authorize, without public advertising or, uh, heading of the bill. Now, therefore, be it resolved by Polk County Commission, meeting in regular session this sixteenth day of March, twenty twenty-three, at the Polk County Courthouse in Benton, Tennessee, authorizing, Polk County Road Department, Lord G. Thompson Jr., to sign any and all documents necessary in this capacity as chief administrative officer of highways, along with the designation agent for the city of Benton, so that it has to facilitate, or, or faithfully, uh, execute documents according to the transfer ownership of the following equipment for the sale price of five hundred dollars. Uh, unit number five thirty-two, two thousand, one, third dump truck, with a bin number, uh, this resolution shall become effective by the county legislative body, on passage the public welfare requirement adopted this day, sixteenth of March, twenty twenty-three.
And we're going to add in the second one, just, if you don't care, uh, adding it to the city of Copper Hill, is the same setup, in the origin of authority, uh, and the city of Copper Hill be authority to make a, uh, first, um, chemicals, or, uh, two hundred dollars, numbers six two four, and that's the number three four, fifty-six ten, crack the board.
Yes.
With ten.
The boat, they were work, not, ought to be fired, except, lesser amount.
Like I said, because these two are categorized, and it's something, I'm, sensation, with my motion, I'm voting, that's a little. My motion, approve.
Second.
A motion on three five and three six and twenty-three, resolution number, any discussion? Motion by, much later, second by, any discussion? Roll call.
Pete Parker?
Yes.
Shane Bowman?
Yes.
Greg Ford?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Nurse David?
Yes.
Don't give me.
Yes.
Chris Martin?
Yes.
Don't give me.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, the local department, uh, this is surplus property, uh, you should receive tonight, three, you did, or, or resolution, uh, there's been a, three fourth, will be the one that you see with a lot of lines, a lot of calls, and that's the general surplus, that would be three zero point three, in multiple abandoned, so if you have the resolution, uh, surplus, it will be three five point three. And, and one, oh, so that was the copper, copper hill, oh, yes, it'll be, uh, three six, that's, that's your resolution of this. So the first one, uh, as the generic, it's a request to make a surplus, uh, let's, like, probably, maybe a regular session, the, uh, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, with the intent to, to sell and auction hill at a later date for some of the TCA code, and you've got a list, and the items on the list are, uh, twenty, twenty-eight, you have the list, you have the description, serial number ten, and the year model, the date acquired. But I have a motion on three fourth point three. I have a motion, because these are more than different, and so I'm on, are, yes, making the, uh, true, so I have a motion on three fourth point three, any discussion, have a second?
affected by the county's late body on passage to public welfare requirement adopted this date sixteenth of March twenty three.
And we're going to add in the second one, just if you don't hear. The add in is to the city of Copperfield is decided set up in the origin of authority. Uh, and the city of Copperfield be authority to make a first, um, technicals of two hundred dollars, numbers six, two, four, and that's the number three, four, fifty, sixty, crack the law.
Yes. They both do a little work, not on the B fire unit, except for lesser amount.
Like I said, because these two are categorized as something under the sensation of emotional motive.
Second, emotional three, five, and three, six, and twenty-three resolution number.
Be discussion. Motion by much later second by Ed. Call.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Jane Donovan?
Yes.
Greg Wood?
Yes.
Matthew Evans?
Yes.
John Pickman?
Yes. Motion passes. Was that the only thing we had tonight?
Yes, that's, that's all right. You're done with me.
Yeah, I just want to make sure if there's anything else. I didn't wish. Yeah, I don't know if I did anything I missed or not.
Appreciate it.
Okay, surplus property courthouse is the old border area. This was made this way.
Can I have a question? Can I have a question?
Uh.
Can we change that?
The can executive has to be, the, the, the office can actually be tested to be surplus. The executive can executive has to be the same.
Well, he just, we had some on the top.
Yeah.
And so we'll do the same resolution or even the surplus.
I'll, I'll, I'll restore this more.
I just want to go into the guy.
Yeah, okay, we'll do the resolution. We'll make a change.
I don't care if he does his name and he's keeping some.
Because of the, the border proof character, understand, so, so he can go through. All right, uh, I'm not gonna read it.
I don't care if I don't have to read it.
Just read it.
Okay. Uh, let's go over to the short surplus property. The following, all border ready, I was part of the U and all border panels, how whole field is intended to use and service to down your code panel is continued usage. Last time, big time, suspect has to extend out with such property even as suggested in the following pages. Now therefore, let's be resolved by the county commission in regular session, two things today as March twenty twenty-three, the front of TCA five dash fourteen dash one oh eight and any other law of the state of Tennessee that the copper basis hereby are rights to sell or disperse of in part, or in part, or in hold, the following properties, which are hereby deemed to be unusable or surplus by the copper base or code panel commission, with such being made at illegal sale, discharge, or discharge qualified under chapter five of the Tennessee code, animated, or any other applicable law or allowance by the state of Tennessee for dispersment of surplus damage or unusable property. This resolution shall be effective on passage to public welfare, welfare requirement. So we're going to read word back to what we all said.
To authorize any one under chapter five of Tennessee code, whether office holder or community executive, to disperse of, or sale, reset of property would be moved. Is there a deal or? Somebody want to make that motion? There's a deal.
Not motion.
Not motion. Second. Not motion, the second. Do you have to understand the, the page, the whole page, the beginning, the description, the number, just an extra.
Um, well, I'm just asking, you know, holders have.
No, I mean, the number, the number used.
Yes, and then, um, of course, probably, you know, he's supposed to put it in.
So he's authorized to get rid of.
The ones that he doesn't.
They're hoping where.
The eight unit work. She's.
So Rockford wants to get rid of that? Go call.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Jane Donovan?
Yes.
And that is to be such that.
Yes.
With the one, yes, John Pickman.
Yes. I apologize for that. I trusted you. Get it from you and then this morning during the break, I, I apologize for that. I don't care what we have. All right, health department. That's our, and executive patcher, which means to raise your.
Which means, uh, let's join me. They're actually here, and so, and we talked, this is something I talked about before, that we could use a lot of grant for a new department, but they got some scenarios like and shares.
Thank you. Uh, many points I make in the reading record for the Tennessee Department of Health to cover a ten county region, and to you, that is your local county director. Uh, we had both approached that in town, and that town department is a one in basin. Um, because of COVID, we do have the opportunity to potentially build this without department in basin, uh, but just to give you an idea of what's at stake. Um, we can get a total of two point two, three, four, two point two million dollars basically, um, of which the county match would actually be three hundred twenty-six nine hundred. The match was determined by either ten percent of your COVID, your, your total COVID, total COVID, uh, monies that you received, uh, directly to the county, or twenty-five percent of the project, but the state allows you to do whichever one is less. So in your old's case, according to our figures, and this, these, these figures are probably about a year old, this probably was the initial COVID money that you got, you should have received about three point two million in the first COVID act leg, which means your local match, that's where the three twenty-six nine comes from. So actually, for the total project, the county would only be matching about fourteen percent of the total project. Um, and of course, the health department in basin is associated with the, with the community center. Um, it's by far our oldest facility in, in our ten counties. Um, I know the one in Benton was built probably since two thousand. Um, and while we do only have three staff there, um, obviously, if we had a higher demand going forward, we have positions across, we have about two hundred some odd positions across our ten county region, and we always can shift those positions around if demand increases in one particular area or not. So while we have three or four staff there right now, if things changed, we could expand. Um, some of the conversations we've had with Robbie was the idea of, of potentially building some kind of a, a community room associated with it, so that it could be used for a lot of different uses. Um, we've got an example of that in Mary County, our health department in Jasper, uh, called it a promotion center, and it sits about forty folks, it's got a demonstration page, so folks like U G I, station two coming, the nutrition classes, things along those lines, but they use it for health council, they use it for a lot of different things. We have that kind of potential. It's also noteworthy that of the three hundred twenty-six thousand, any, uh, land that the county would have to purchase, we go towards that three hundred twenty-six that we can take out of it. Um, there are other scenarios, if the commission decides that you don't necessarily want or need a new health department in basin, um, we can spend less. Um, the only issue being that you're going to have to spend probably a total project of well under a million dollars to make sure that your match then drops down, because then, then it's going to rely on twenty-five percent of your match, it's going to be about three hundred fifty thousand. So right now, you're getting roughly eight dollars for every dollar that you were spending locally, you'd be getting eight dollars in, in health department. So, um, we're open for any questions if you have.
I thought that there was a scenario being talked about where the money was going to be, I, I might be wrong, uh, that the money was going to be split between east and west. No new building, but a lot of updates.
That's also a viable scenario. Um, we could renovate, uh, the one in basin, um, you know, don't know exactly what that would cost, we got two thousand square feet there, so you've got to figure, you know, what that would be. There are some repairs that could be done in Benton, specifically the parking lot has always been a major issue. Um, it fills with a lot of water and especially in the winter, um, if we got moms carrying babies in, that water might freeze over, and now we've got literally ice between, you know, the parking area and the front door. Uh, just trying to think of any other, uh, we did just do a minor renovation of that lobby in Benton, so, uh, as far as inside, it's in pretty good shape. We may have some like old HVAC units that we would want to replace. Most of our HVAC units are probably fifteen, twenty years old, so they may be in need of, of some repair. So those are options as well, but as I say, um, it will, uh, it will have a, it will make a difference on the county match, so if you decide, okay, we don't need two point two million, we need a million, well, now your match is two hundred fifty thousand, which ratio wise, you're not decreasing that much from three, three twenty-six.
What's the timeline on, on y'all meeting season?
We have until twenty, uh, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six, it's been all a month, but that means, you know, probably close to a year of building plans with architects and stuff like that, a year to build at least, so while that sounds like a pretty good way that we keep, you know, coming up pretty quick.
Well, we're rounding up at our next, we'll meet, me, y'all might want to come too, I'll get Robbie to tell y'all what to do.
Okay.
We, well, we got a lot going on too, on East End, by courthouse, and that could teach them, pay a lot of money, you know, there's a lot of, I don't know, just now, and, and we're going to look at that, see where we're at on the money. I know, uh, well, we got a plan, hopefully it won't cost a bunch on courthouse, but if it's followed through, we're bound mile off to do something as far as courthouse on East End, so we got to be mindful of that too. But what we're at, y'all, down there, building, maybe.
Okay.
Uh, I'll have Robbie do that, say in twenty days.
Okay.
We'll get the ball rolling anyway.
Does it get any comeback to the commission?
Yeah, yeah, we'll put it back on the gym.
Okay.
And we'll get the answer.
Okay.
And maybe, uh, by then, when I'm back to courthouse situation too.
Yeah, okay. That's fair.
We do appreciate y'all. Sure. Appreciate you. Bruce, I'd like to take your information. We want to include, I was at the get open, I think it was pretty. Specifics for what service that you're going to provide, what the percentages, that was on one bit. That was then. And percentage change, change, uh, we're getting a little more, I was saying, force power, a little, little wet, reception, reception. And what it was, it seems to be a little better than the whole county.
And they are a little off.
Oh, they's got to be.
Yeah, they're high. Every inch of them. That's, I guess, somebody else won't do.
So I guess. Trace Loveley, this says actually wrong. So we'll play it on back.
The same thing you know.
I, I was there, but, uh, it doesn't come anymore how it did then. There was no cost, it was strictly shared revenue, right?
Correct.
And so they're going to give us money, and we don't give them.
Correct.
And they're going to give us more money than the company did give us.
They were offering a tablet, that was, some of them, that was their added code compared to what we're now. Currently.
Do what?
It's really, you know.
A raise?
A raise. A raise. They're so sweet.
It's real. Mr. Parker, the city of the actual, what was the name of your name?
City.
City. Um, city telephone.
Do I have a motion on our end, please?
I'm making a motion to take it, very long and long, and we're prepared to find actually for number three.
Thank you. I have motion, not Brooks, say it one more time. In discussion. Go call.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Jane Donovan?
Yes.
Greg Wood?
Yes.
Matthew Evans?
Yes.
John Pickman?
Yes.
Matthew Evans?
If they have.
Okay, great. If I'm here for my company, I'll help.
Resolution, this is before the doors closed, East Side, County Fair. This one's good, please.
Put that on my end, John, hold it, Kelly, be here in a minute.
Okay. Put it down, put the bar at work, remind us to go back to. So we're going to surplus property, now for the next part next to you.
Resolution to discharge surplus property, whereas the following listed property has fulfilled its intended usage, usage and longevity in service of the county of, it is continued usage that would come suspected to be expected outcome with such property being as included on the following page. Now therefore, to be resolved by the Pocahontas County Commission Regular Session, sixteenth of March twenty twenty-three, pursuant to the TCA five dash fourteen dash one oh eight, one and two, any other law of the state of Tennessee that the Pocahontas Copper Basin Fire Rescue is hereby authorized to sell or disperse of in part or in hold, the following properties. What are you looking at?
The TCA's operating. This one, you're talking about, that will prove says authorized.
I don't know, I'm just reading it.
Pocahontas Copper Basin Fire Rescue.
Yeah. Is hereby, Pocahontas Fire Rescue is hereby authorized to sell or disperse of in part or in hold of the following properties, which is hereby deemed to be unusable, unusable or surplus by Pocahontas Commission, with such being made at illegal sale or discharge qualified under chapter five of the Tennessee code, not by other applicable law or allowance by the state of Tennessee, for dispersment of surplus damage or unusable property.
Property, this is on the second page, this is seventy-three Chevy factory, eighty-six Carolina van, nine Carolina van, nine six four family tour, nine eight four expedition, American, eighty-two bladder truck. But what I told you that, I don't think that can sell. Is that not the same exact?
We were, we were talking, we worked together on the, we gave this one to, just whatever county.
This one has to be a move to, uh, sells off around by title file.
Then we gave you a manpower delay.
Yes.
So, so first one, and this is for the understanding that that money does go back to the copper base.
Yes, sir. Yes. That's great. So I have a motion.
Second.
Ask what you mean.
Yes.
Motion, second, be in discussion. Go call.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Jane Donovan?
Yes.
Greg Wood?
Yes.
Matthew Evans?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. We'll go ahead with the next one, and then we'll come back to you. Copper Basin Fire Rescue, that's it.
Martin Center, fifth chief of Copper Basin Fire Rescue, thank you for, uh, allowing me to speak tonight. Uh, as you know, we've been dealing with the ISO insurance service out there that's been talking about reducing our potential, uh, insurance rating for the east side of, uh, uh, Polk County from a seven to a ten, which would be equivalent to no insurance protection, which would be equivalent to somewhere between doubling and tripling of insurance rates for the people of East Polk County. Uh, we've been working, um, working hard since, uh, June to correct that. Uh, ISO has been looking over our shoulder, and, um, thanks to the, the members of this commission and what you did back in December, when you voted extra dollars for us to be able to get these truck sticks and the stations running. ISO came in and inspected us at the end of February, and, um, he was, his words, he was pleasantly surprised with what he found. All five stations were open, we had engines in all five stations, uh, he was, he pulled our records to see how many people we had showing up on structure fires. We averaged fourteen point seven, which he said is, is quite high for a rural fire department. He also looked at our, our county processes, what we're going through there, he was thrilled with that, he was thrilled with our membership, and, uh, and come to find out, I'm living in Cleveland, he listens to our frequencies and veterans that's going on. But it was the hard work of this commission, uh, I know you guys voted unanimously back in December to give us additional funds, get these trucks working, and it was because what you've done, the key with these ISO ratings is he has to see good fire stations, good apparatus, and good putting on the truck, and that's eighty percent of our rating, and of course, those are free things that the county has ownership of. And so, uh, with what we were able to accomplish, uh, he not only told us that he was going to not push our rating to a ten, but he was actually going to suggest that instead of putting us back at an ISO rating of seven, he was going to suggest they improve our rating to a six, which would be incredible, you'd actually see our insurance rate going in the other direction. This process takes six to eight months for it to pass through the ISO system. So what does that mean? Well, number one, ISO is not a bunch of numbers. They, they seen us, they're happy with us, but one of the reasons it takes six to eight months for this final raise to come out is they're going to be looking over our shoulder to make sure that we didn't pull a shell game on, all right? Um, we got to show consistency with this now. So I bring that up because as we go into this new budget cycle, one of the things we have to face is you have to have functioning equipment in these stations, and that's what killed us last time, when he came in a year and a half ago, two years ago, and we've got fire stations with engines that haven't been able to crank in years, it destroyed us. Um, I bring this up because right now, we've got two fire engines that are over forty years on each, and, and ladies and gentlemen, they're day by day. And so one of the things that I, I would be asking this commission to consider is to maintain where we're at now, we've gotten into a really good spot, but to maintain, we've really got to come up with a plan in the future of how we're going to start replacing these trucks. Um, forty-year-old fire trucks just, they just don't think it, and, uh, it's getting to the point that just because of their age, we've got to come up with a plan. Now, I understand the money's tight and everybody needs some, but, um, it's just a simple reality that, that these trucks are well beyond dental life, and, uh, we're not asking to replace all of them immediately, but we've got to come up with a plan where every year we'll replace them, a little bit of it, otherwise, we're going to just fall right back into that trap of having an ISO rating ten. But I just wanted to give you that, everything's looking real positive, um, we're still on our side in what we can do to keep these trucks running. We had one of our tankers, um, pump locked up on it about a week and a half ago, four of my people spent their weekends carrying the pump apart, we get back together, and our trucks back up and running. Uh, and we do this every time these trucks broke. I literally see Waukegan getting some parts, not two hours ago, it's another truck that's broken. But there's only so much we can fix. Some of these trucks, just because of the sheer age, are getting to the point that, uh, it's just far beyond what we're capable of doing. So I just wanted to give you that real positively, because I think it's a, it's a real good thing for the people of Polk County. We're just going to have to look forward to come up with a, a plan to move forward, a good strategy, so that we can make sure we don't ever slide back to where we were before. So with that, if you have any answer, any questions, commission. Thank you.
We appreciate your time.
We'll go back to, to the distribution, to the board of, of East Side, and the one executive has that ownership, uh, Christian Walker, would you like to address, if you got your information on that, if you'd like to address it?
You want me to read it? Because that's for the grant, Rob.
Uh, I'm, I'll take some. I didn't know if you had any further information on it, or just this written word.
Um, no, I mean, I know on the east side, that currently, we are, our unit currently is at Kenzie College. We have about twenty-five to thirty, um, kids daily, right of hold for the time being, and we are currently looking at other properties, several different properties have been addressed and looked at. Um, currently, the most recent one, when it gets renovated, may be the copper, uh, copper mine building. Um, that's all, right now, it's just kind of open to different.
See, y'all are, that max price.
Yes, due to, uh, there's some grants, but they thought it's on hold for a moment, so we can't take any more kids, on the east side.
Somebody like to do this, or do, so, so, I'm not sure what, the resolution, three, three eight?
Three eight.
Okay, whereas there is currently a lack of school-aged childcare for Polk County's parents and caregivers, which has been worsened by the pandemic and childcare issues that it has caused. Whereas there is a need on the eastern side of Polk County for school-aged childcare, which will help alleviate this problem that places a burden on productivity and, and the economy by causing difficulties maintaining employment with a lack of childcare options. Whereas the Boys and Girls Club of the Ocoy Region has proposed to develop a new Copper Basin Boys and Girls Club in Copper Basin, which will include a new gymnasium and education building. Whereas the state of Tennessee has community development block grants up to six hundred and thirty thousand, for which local governments may compete in, order to solve important community needs such as community livability and community revitalization. And whereas, since Polk County is a member of the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development, three-star economic and community development program, Polk County is eligible to apply for up to six hundred and thirty thousand in CDBG funds, and is eligible for a three-star four percent discount for the required local match. Whereas Polk County is eligible to apply for community development block grant in April twenty twenty-three, and is able to apply for projects on behalf of five oh one C thirty nonprofit corporations such as Boys and Girls Club of the Ocoy Region. Whereas the Boys and Girls Club of the Ocoy Region will be responsible for the required seventeen percent in matching funds as required by the grant, and all additional project costs needed to complete the project. Be it therefore resolved, that the Polk County Commission does hereby authorize the Polk County Executive to submit an application for six hundred and thirty thousand in CDBG funds for the construction of the Copper Basin Boys and Girls Club. And be it further resolved, that the county executive is authorized to enter into agreements necessary for the successful award of this grant, subject to its approval by the state. Be it even further resolved, if said application. Be it even further resolved, if said application is approved, the county executive is hereby authorized to accept on behalf of Polk County said community development block grant, execute any and all documents, and enter into agreements necessary for the successful application and award of the grant to enter into project administration agreement with the South Tennessee Development District, subject to the ECD approval. Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion by. Second, number one. To approve the discussion. This is resolution three.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Donovan?
Yes. Yes.
Good.
Chris Martin? Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, number one, first thing is the resolution on emergency communication. Yeah, my understanding is there's two applications that are turned in to take the award for seven to nine million, which is the regulation to approve. If we do that, that will be the nominations that we just put in for the county commission does have to confirm the transactions. Three.
There's four.
Three. There's three. There's one, there's two, there's three, there's four.
We just refigured on Monday. That's on their main warning pack. Okay, got you, got you.
So we're giving resolution three, ten, twenty-three. We'll start with that.
Whereas the county opponent has in, has increased interest in participation on the county nine-one-one emergency communication board. And whereas the current board is made up of only seven members and has the ability to increase by two additional members under the Tennessee Code seven dash eighty-six one oh five. Now therefore, it be resolved by a vote of the board of county commissioners of Polk County, meeting in regular session on the sixteenth day of March, twenty twenty, that all Polk County nine-one-one emergency communications district board be increased to nine numbers and a certified copy of this resolution be served to the chairperson of such board as described by law.
That should be the end.
Yeah, I said, say none. So that's what I.
Make a question.
So.
Motion by Frank, second, by Mr. Davis. Any discussion?
Uh, I got one more quick question. One of these, can we do, one of these is my daughter. So I don't really need to be bothering her with that.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Donovan?
Yes.
Greg Bird?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Max Davis?
Yes.
Chris Martin? Yes. Helen Morgan?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. The nine-one-one boards now move to nine members. Uh, the county executive has turned in some names to the board on the nine-one-one board. How many names has it turned in already? Right to honor. Priest is back. All right. Are these his nominations?
These are his three nominations.
These are the ones he has nominated. Now, when we put them home, go ahead and explain what you've got with your man. Send me, have any come off? Or need reappointed?
Two current members need reappointed. They're from Orangeburg.
So that's just five. So we report them, take about seven.
You got one you're out, okay. You got one you're out for the morning. Come on.
Okay, we have.
One baker should, you got one baker.
The baker seems a district three.
Yeah.
District two is up having it.
Right.
What has been spanked?
Yes.
Seven.
About.
About two.
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 Three?
Yes, we now have nine.
Seven.
Nine.
Got that base three of four because we have one, eight, zero, two.
Okay, that's where I lost that one. And then you got three reappointed. And it works out. So do I have a, I have a motion on the county executive's three nominations.
I might have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Davis, second by Master Grant. Any discussion?
Chairman, I have a question.
Okay.
Was it not stated in that December meeting that county executive Patrick said he wanted someone from district two to represent on that board as well?
There he is.
There he is.
Ron Cook is district two.
Okay. And there was three applications turned in?
Yes.
Well, they could have been somebody else. It's just his discretion to get to.
We, we had.
To get to pick. And we can prove them or not.
We had seven, one left, so I think it's six. We moved it to nine. So after, there's three, and then we have two reappointments that have happened to the, the bakers.
So to get these applications, no matter who we want, we can't load on them to the county executive.
He has nominated, he has sole nomination parent, but they cannot go in unless we approve. I put them up here a couple of months ago and it's checked out early. I have a motion on the three nominations.
And all three of these, I will add real quick, is all got experience in nine-one-one ambulance around yards. So we're lucky on that. Because you wouldn't, not want to vote for me for it.
You got Patrick, you got Mel, she got in.
You want, you want somebody that knows something that's going on.
Yeah.
Now, Commissioner Davis does have a direct family member who is nominated by the county executive. Uh, their family member, eighteen-year-old, no mother, part of indirect household, but being indirect conflict. And she has a right to retain her vote or vote. So the conflict, it speaks outside. That's up to her. Complete. It's not very conflict. There's nothing wrong with it. Any other discussion? Ro'Kaw.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Donovan?
Yes.
Greg Bird?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Max Davis?
Yes.
Chris Martin?
Yes.
Helen Morgan? Don Kitten?
Yes.
Master Grant.
Okay, that motion passes. They are appointed. Now, before we leave that, you do have two that are about for reappointment that have been sent by the nine-one-one board requesting reappointment.
Those are Matt Green and Ron Fox.
Who are currently on there. Do I have a motion on that?
My motion.
Second. Motion by Howard, second by David Davis. Any discussion? All right, Ro'Kaw.
Ron Fox. Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Donovan?
Yes.
Greg Bird?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Max Davis?
Yes.
Chris Martin?
Yes.
Helen Morgan?
Yes.
Don Kitten?
Yes.
Master Grant?
Yes.
Motion passes. That's the third nine-one-one board. Now we're on the interlocal agreement. Where the county, county executive, we need to meet up.
We do. We sure do.
What are they doing? Okay.
A resolution approving the interlocal agreement between Braddock County, Tennessee, and Polk County, Tennessee for probation services and authorizing the county executive to execute the agreement on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee. Whereas the Polk County, Tennessee has requested that Braddock County, Tennessee, through its misdemeanor.
Misdemeanor.
Probation, well, says office, provide supervision to the misdemeanor probationer's provision. Sentenced in Polk County courts until the time as the probationer's conviction is fulfilled. And whereas Braddock County, Tennessee has agreed to provide probation services for Polk County, Tennessee, subject to the terms and conditions set out in the interlocal agreement between Braddock County and Polk County for probation services agreement for the following yearly amounts. Year one, forty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars, July the first, twenty-three through June the thirtieth, twenty-four. Year two, forty-five thousand, eighteen, through July the first, twenty-four through June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Year three, forty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars, July the first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Year four, twenty, forty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars, July the first, twenty twenty-six through June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Now therefore, it be resolved by the legislative body in session, in session assembled that the interlocal agreement between Braddock County and Polk County for probation services is approved and the county executive is authorized to execute the agreement on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee.
Do I have a motion? What are the motion number is?
Eleven.
Three. Do I have a motion?
I might have a motion.
A second.
I have a motion by, motion by David, second by Chris Martin. Any discussion on this?
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Donovan?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Max Davis?
Yes.
Chris Martin?
Yes.
Helen Morgan?
Yes.
Don Kitten?
No.
Remember that.
Motion passes. Next is number sixteen. It's a resolution, this is also going pretty good. Ambulance service, Christian Spears.
All right. Resolution approving amendment to provide emergency and non-emergency ambulance service between Polk County, Tennessee and Ameripro EMS of Tennessee. Assigning of CareMed and authorizing the county executive to execute the amendment on behalf of Polk County. Whereas Polk County, Tennessee elected in March of twenty twenty-two to exercise its option to increase the ambulance availability and staffing by CareMed of Tennessee from two twenty-four hour ALS ambulances to twelve-hour ambulances and one ALS quick response vehicle to four twenty-four hour ALS ambulances for a period of seventeen months. Whereas said increase in ambulance availability and staffing increased the county's monthly payment from sixty thousand to seventy-five. Whereas CareMed of Tennessee merges assets with Ameripro EMS of Tennessee. Whereas Ameripro EMS of Tennessee, assigning of CareMed EMS of Tennessee, has been unable to maintain providing fully staffed four twenty-four ALS ambulances. Whereas Ameripro EMS of Tennessee, assigning of CareMed EMS of Tennessee, has agreed to start providing the county with monthly reports detailing the ambulance availability and staffing being provided to the county. Whereas Ameripro EMS of Tennessee, assigning of CareMed EMS of Tennessee, has further agreed to refund the county for the time period it is unable to maintain providing fully staffed four twenty-four ALS ambulances. Whereas Polk County, Tennessee, has decided to return to the original ambulance availability and staffing of two twenty-four hour ambulances to twelve-hour ambulances and one ALS quick response vehicle for sixty thousand per month once the above referenced seventeen-month time period expires. But the county expressly preserves the option to increase the ambulance availability and staffing to four twenty-four hour ALS ambulances for seventy-five per month at any time while this agreement is in effect. And whereas Polk County, Tennessee and Ameripro EMS of Tennessee, assigning of CareMed, desire to amend the agreement between the partners by entering into the amendment to provide emergency and non-emergency ambulance service. Now therefore, be it resolved by the legislative body in session assembly. The amendment to provide emergency and non-emergency ambulance service between Polk County, Tennessee and Ameripro, assigning of CareMed of Tennessee is approved and the county executive is authorized to execute the amendment on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved if the resolution takes effect from and after its passage to public welfare requiring it the sixteenth day of March, twenty twenty-three.
The preliminary part of this is just what's being adopted from the first law, correct?
Right, right.
So the second part.
We don't have.
We got three, twelve. This is resolution three, twelve, twenty-three.
Oh, also, I have to have in that when we sign, David Grayson is not the one. It will be Larry Robinson and the county attorney is drawing that back up. There's a right name on it for when it's signed.
Do I have a motion on the second, three, twelve, twenty-three with the limited section on the statute change? Do I have a motion?
I might have a motion, second. Resolution three, twelve, twenty-three.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Motion by Bruce, second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Ro'Kaw.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Donovan?
Yes.
Greg Bird?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Max Davis?
Yes.
Chris Martin?
Yes.
Helen Morgan?
Yes.
Don Kitten?
Yes.
Motion passes. I think the. You're watching. I think the. And I've got, I've got a couple of suspensions, uh, these were suspension of rules on opioid resolution. And that's due to a town statute requirement when it has to be passed. I do approve.
That's why I, that's due to. I might have a motion on suspend rules.
A second.
I have a motion to suspend right D B and opioid resolutions. Uh, any discussion? It does take two persons majority to suspend. Ro'Kaw, please.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
Shane Donovan?
Yes.
Greg Bird?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Max Davis?
Yes.
Chris Martin?
Yes.
Helen Morgan?
Yes.
Don Kitten?
Yes.
Okay, the first one would be the opioid resolution. That should be one that I handed out in the last debate. Somebody will just read that. That, that is a C T S resolution sent out to the counties for adoption. If they need to adopt, hand them, and apparently it's the only way you're gonna get money unless you're gonna keep a separate suit, your, the business, like, everybody's going in and setting up.
Okay. All right, here we go. Whereas the opioid epidemic continues to impact communities in the United States, state of Tennessee and Polk County, Tennessee. Whereas Polk County has suffered harm, continued to suffer harm as a result of the opioid epidemic. Whereas the state of Tennessee and some Tennessee local governments have filed lawsuits against opioid manufacturers, distributors, retailers, including many federal lawsuits by Tennessee counties and cities that are pending litigation captured in the National Prescription Litigation number twenty-eight oh four, the M D L case is referred to as the opioid litigation. Whereas certain pharmaceutical distributors and manufacturers have proposed settlements that Polk County finds acceptable in the best interest of the community. Whereas the Tennessee legislation enacted, enacted the public chapter numbered four ninety-one during twenty twenty-one regular session of the one hundred and twelve. Tennessee General Assembly was assigned and allowed by Governor Lee on May the twenty-four, twenty twenty-one, which addresses the allocation of funds for certain proposed opioid litigation settlements. Whereas the state of Tennessee, non-legal counties, and representative of various local governments involved in opioid litigation have proposed, have proposed a unified plan for the allocation and use of certain respective settlement and bankruptcy funds with opioid-related litigation settlement funds. Whereas the Tennessee State subdivision opioid agreement, the Tennessee plan attached hereto as exhibit A sets forth framework of a unified plan for the proposed allocation and use of the settlement funds. And whereas participation in the settlements of the Tennessee plan by a large majority of the Tennessee cities and counties will materially. Plan by a large majority of the Tennessee cities and counties will materially increase the amount of settlement funds that Tennessee will receive from pending proposed opioid settlement. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the vote of the Board of the County Commission of Polk County, meeting in regular session sixteenth day of March, twenty-three, that Polk County finds that participation in the Tennessee Plan is in best interest of Polk County and its citizens because such a plan would ensure effective structure for the commitment of settlement funds to abate and to seek and to resolve the opioid epidemic. Section two, that Polk County hereby expresses its support for a unified plan for the allocation and use of settlement funds as generally described in the Tennessee Plan. Section three, Polk County Executive is hereby expressively authorized to execute the Tennessee Plan substantially in the form from attached Exhibit A, and the county executive is hereby authorized to execute any formal agreements necessary to implement a unified plan for the allocation and use of settlement funds that is substantially consistent with the Tennessee Plan and this resolution. Section four, that the Polk County Executive is hereby expressively authorized to execute any formal agreement related documents evidencing, evidence, Polk County agreement to be settled of claims and litigations, the simply related to the Amerisource, Bergen Corporation, Cardinal Health Incorporated, and McKesson Corporation, Janssen Pharmaceuticals Incorporated, and Johnson and Johnson. The Polk County Executive is authorized to take such action as necessary and appropriate to affect the Polk County's participation in the Tennessee Plan and these settlements. Yeah. I hope that probably not anyway.
Listen, this was talked about today at some training, this is new, nobody's really sure. I don't think they have a good grasp on how this money's coming out or, or what we're binding ourselves to on this. But what you think's right, it doesn't appear to have any.
Maybe, maybe.
It doesn't appear to, but nobody knows, it's just like our first time, nobody knows exactly what it is. Oh, yes, very restricted.
Yeah. Free money, I'm willing for restrictions.
Do what?
I said it's very restrictive on how we can use it and who we can use it on as far as the kind of programs and times like that.
And they're supposed to send out a flash email to the city, but they not even got the permit. But without one thing that is, we can't, if they don't, yeah, if they don't, they won't do. Okay, so y'all know where the thing is, let's see, do I have a motion?
I might move.
Have a motion, motion Davis, have a second. Have a second, Kristi Martin, this is three, thirteen. Twenty-three, roll call.
Pete Parker?
Yes.
Shane Donovan?
Yes.
David Davis?
Yes.
Mel Davis?
Yes.
Kristi Martin?
Yes.
Helen Morgan?
Yes.
Don Kipman?
Yes. Motion passes, the next one is the, this is one that Commissioner Brooks has been working on, had a lot of input on, this IDB, you've got the resolution.
This is just, uh, the IED board, we, we didn't know they'd go on agenda that deadline, but it's kind of time sensitive, really, when they've done tonight, so, uh, they just give, give them some land over there, they've got, somebody ready moves it right around.
Yes, sir.
This company is, it's gonna make new jobs, so they're worried the other, we've got to get it over to IED board.
This is that, I'll throw next one.
Yeah, thank you.
Whereas the county in Polk has taxes and land holdings in West Polk County Industrial Park that Jeff P. Ulysses attended purpose. Whereas an increase in available jobs and property taxation is needed to sustain Polk County. Whereas Polk County Industrial Wealth Board has legal powers to entice businesses and industry to utilize the property that the governing body of Polk County does not have, and requests such property being given to them for certain purposes. Therefore, be it resolved by simple majority vote, Polk County legislative body meeting in regular session on the sixteenth day of March, twenty-twenty-three, as upon completion and approval of certain aid to be provided by Polk County Industrial Board to the Polk County Commission. The land generally referred to as the island, as a landhold encompassed by industrial access circle, West Polk Industrial Park, off Parks Row, on State Route Three fourteen in Benton, Tennessee, is included in the area currently utilized by the Polk County Sheriff's Office, grand pound of property holdings and a twenty-foot border to the area, be gifted to Polk County Industrial Board for the betterment of Polk County. This property is further described in Polk County Register, these document one-four, triple zero, four five eight, as property located in center of Wright Way of Industrial Access Circle. Be it further enacted, Polk County Executive authorized to take all necessary actions as in power of signing documents, contracts, or agreements that may be needed to complete such transfer of property.
Do I have a? Motion to tell party, page? A motion by David Davis, second by Chris Davis. Any discussion? Roll call.
Pete Parker?
Yes.
Shane Donovan?
Yes.
David Davis?
Yes.
Mel Davis?
Yes.
Kristi Martin?
Yes.
Helen Morgan?
Yes.
Don Kipman?
Yes.
Motion passes, I have one, I have two, and I asked the district full commission to give a name of someone who's willing to serve on the board because we were supposed to have a member when, we had him before he was in, in his step hat, and I was, only to choose, I'm also, so, Ms. Baldwin, if you have a, if there's a question, if, if nobody has any problem with that, just go on. Can you, can you read this? We've got, it's gotta be out of court, yes. I'm the county clerk, county clerk. Ms. Baldwin, you want to speak on the, the, what they had in the packet, or you want to let that slide?
Well, just look, there is, there will be a letter in everyone's packet to, for us to say that, do like, a little work session, or, or, and discuss, you know, just, so everybody can, just bounce off the bound, everybody can review it.
Okay, I've had some questions, a couple of comments, and I know some other commissioners have had more than I have. This is an analysis statement, if anybody's got anything to address, feel free.
We've had an issue when this rally races got up.
That's one of the things I didn't talk about.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm glad that we were told about it.
I'm glad we got notified by Hampton County Chamber Commerce bought the gun, their kid on City Shore. Oh, he done the press release, but, uh, I did find out today from Forest Service that he jumped the gun, the Hampton County Chamber Commerce, there is not a permit being issued for it in September, uh, he was putting the car for holders in his press release, so, you know, nobody's contacted us.
I heard it on the news. I said, okay.
May I hear everybody's permission?
Have you heard?
In just a second.
Go ahead, we just say, you know, we just say way, way up here, man.
My name is Brian McFord, I'm a resident in Polk County, and I'm here for that very reason. I'm joined by some of the fellow residents who share a boundary and main corridor into the, basically the Cooks and Creek corridor into the Cherokee. We're here with, to express our opposition to this, and want to learn the commission's perspective, to understand the permitting process, and to also understand where we as citizens stand with having a voice.
Well, the permits, we can't say if they're denial, but we do have our opinions and influence for the Forest Service, they're issued by the Forest Service, however, have you seen the press release from Hampton County Chamber Commerce, that's still complex, but there's no permits for September, uh, we did find out today that there was an interim position being filled in interim capacity, and they were issued permit for the April, April trial run, but that's like nothing, it's like, mind you, but there is no permit for September or anytime down the road, and, uh, I think the, the Forest Service may have been email this guy that done the press release and informed him, you know, he had, he, like, he, he had no business issuing the press release, cause there is no permit, you know, he was just letting him know he's, uh, kind of jumping the gun on everything, but no permit has been issued for September, uh, and like I said, nobody's asked us, we don't know if we got, I can answer, we don't, we don't have emergency services, we don't have any structure, any of our resources will not sustain that.
Does Polk County have a say?
Well, yeah, man, it's in our county, and, you know, this guy's talking about, it's gonna have a twenty-four million dollar impact on Hampton County, and, you know, that's kind of, like that, you know, it's, it's, at the first stage, it's right now, but I'm sure everybody will be hearing a lot of this over the summer.
Is there a, a form to petition for public forum on this subject?
How you go about that? We can do, we can.
What did you say? We'd like to, now that the, let's say the, the news is out, we'd like to petition for public forum and discussion before, and if it's, if it's available, if it's appropriate, before even the Forest Service grants permits for, not only this, this event, this could very well be a benchmark for future events to try to process out.
The county can set up a open town hall type meeting for anybody that wants to, we could host a meeting, we can do a town hall.
A town hall type meeting.
We don't have any authority to create a, a forum.
I've been watching, playing those fans on the front row.
Invite the different groups.
Like they, like they contribute their, like.
Another big issue is lots of, we, we fire the brunt of the Forest Service not paying any property tax, and, you know, all the way we getting the turnout of is recreation opportunities, and everybody's gonna be blocked out, this happened before, about seven years ago, and they even, uh, made a funeral procession, set for an iron high on the side of the road in open road, let the funeral through, I mean, that's, you know, and that's depriving all of them, and they're gonna say, well, it's government land, or Forest Service land, but Polk County residents, you know, they're wanting to fire the brunt of it for the.
You gotta like travel on county roads to get to that line.
So if we not set up like a meeting and have the Forest Service have all parties in, in the, in the.
That's why I said we can have a town hall type session, and the different groups.
Does the events committee have a say-so in this? The events committee, the commission, they have a say-so in this?
The events committee is interested if there's no way around it and have a little say-so in it later on.
Well, I've got nothing but negativity from the public that I'm supposed to.
Well, they're out.
Everybody's against it, and.
It's just a huge day, and my law has not stopped.
Where's the, Cooks and Creek, where's the location of it, other than Cooks and Creek?
Well, it's actually gonna be on this end, but it's gonna affect the west side and the east side, it's gonna start on the west side and go to the east side, through mountains.
Yeah.
Which is gonna tax the fire department, EMS, we don't make that.
From the fire department side, it's critical for us to know to be included in the discussion.
Oh, we just found out today.
I understand, but for, for, for the record, for these promoters, you know, if you're gonna do something that's gonna drastically increase the population and/or the risk of people getting hurt, we need to put extra trucks on, on the road on those days, it's a critical, we're, we're notified and included in this process.
Well, we can't, I mean, the county, and this, you know, speaking in your thing, you know, it's not your responsibility or our responsibility or that's a certain responsibility to let the service for tax.
They don't really contact, he's wanting two dedicated ambulances for April, the east, and they're only wanting to pay like fifty bucks an hour.
We can't do that.
If, uh, if they have any sort of rural rescue out there, we're there to respond if they do not do any sort of rescue. When somebody gets hurt out there in the national forests, they call us to respond. And so it's critical that we know about it, so I can sat trucks to be able to do that.
And I think the big issue is, this guy from Hampton County Chamber Commerce, I know he keeps saying it crazy, he's made all these plans for Polk County, and just like you said, I mean, you ain't been there, nobody's.
When did he contact you?
Well, Richard Taylor called me, uh, I didn't talk to them directly at all, Richard called me, and he hasn't called back with me.
I know twenty years ago, when it had one, there was a more issue, an animal from, uh, local, you know, block around, around, to, you know, the funeral service, uh, people there to get, it was just, it was like. Yep. But it was, and, I mean, if we benefited anything, a mayor and a bunch of tourists rode down, I don't know what was.
Oh, but same model, much candy more.
Yeah. Yeah, we do need to get that set up.
You want to say you try to have something set for the twenty-eighth, two weeks, that's way, is that, so you can inform the crowd to the eighth, yeah, crowd to the eighth, and that way you can have time to contact everybody that needs parties that need to.
Oh, we can't do nothing about that, they done that, the end of the person.
But we can all have a voice and our opinions, we need to have the news here, we need to have the media here.
Yeah, I said, fine.
No, no, no.
That's on a Tuesday. I mean, that'll just be the, that's the last week.
Well, it's about to happen, but.
We will have a.
We can, we make a hundred dollars a month.
The only thing, it is a town hall meeting, we will contact the different groups involved in this, to make sure that the faith gets it out.
I'll have to pay on the day. We need to, we might need to have it at the high school, because we had one over trophy trap screen one time. One of them had Nigel Ray's orders, it gets people out.
We're gonna set it close, close house, it's twenty-eighth, unless you're different.
Don't even mention the court, we have two being announced Monday on the county's website.
What time?
They keep finishing the funeral.
What time, on the twenty-eighth? The one that's seven or six thirty.
Seven o'clock, everybody time to get on the order.
No, you're not gonna, it's family, you're gonna ask him.
Two being, location, two being out, Monday, and I guess Walter put the bike, but you know, Monday, can't you walk? And I guess Walder putting faith in question over Monday, can't you Walder? Oh, and we need, uh, well, it's on another Sunday, but mind me, I'm talking to Walder. Uh, we looked at the pool and Robbie's not here, but we need you to run bids in the papers for the pool duct tape. And, uh, I, I guess just tell them, it's.
Have we looked at it?
It, it, you just hadn't been there. There's no way to ride out the spec, it's got so much wrong with it. I guess they might have rested bedding in, you know, somebody's mug, teeth or smat that could made them, just let them look over. Cause, you know, we're not pool builders, everyone of them might have a different idea on how to fix it. Uh, it's, uh, it takes some work.
It takes some T E L C.
So we're not sure, you know, the beds.
Yeah, I was going to mention that, we, we talked about sixty to ninety days on the bid.
And it ain't going to push you this year anymore.
Cause I've had people say you put a new liner in it, or people say you redo concrete, you don't know how to line or not. Uh, there's all kinds of issues. Issues, and we don't, oh, as smart as all of us are, we don't know what the route to fix it, we just got to fix it.
You know, T D O does a thing called a design build scenario where they ask for people to submit designs and plans to build it and cost all at, at once. And they feel that that's better than them stipulating what needs to be built because the people who are building actually know better. So, good idea to, uh, you might model it after their, it's called does, um, design build bidding.
I guess the, the trade's going to love this. I just, I guess just put, we're accepting meetings and call the county's executives, we're reading that press and paper.
But it needs to be specified, cause what we're doing is put it back in the original condition and repair or replace what needs to be done for the pool dog. I, I, I think that was the original question.
Is there local people interested in, in working on the pool?
We tried it forward, we backed up, Joe Anderson, and they decided to dip on the bid on it. Uh, we got one bid, it's what, two million dollars.
There was some, they did some little bid on it, because when they read the bid specs and got to the market, they just said, they said a bit, bit something, the sip will come in and replace, repair what's there, they would have been interested.
That's what we had to do.
That enough you go on?
Oh, you want me to write?
Yeah.
I've seen Robbie a rough draft and he needs to approve it though, probably. Be glad to help.
Maybe you got a little bit while he kept seeing enough driving away and, uh, they did some things.
Yeah, cat, catfish.
So I guess you can be our spokesperson, we'll have a town meeting for your crew. Well, you know, you coming up in Matthew, get nominated. Or volunteer. Yeah, volunteer.
But listen, if we don't have any plan yet, it's under announcements and statements, do I have a motion to?
Motion to adjourn.